Okay, are we ready everyone? Our apologies for being a little behind schedule. We tried to start right on time, but with all the excitement of this evening's Critical Thinking Expo, we're a little behind schedule. So we would go ahead and get started. If you could all join me please for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will start this evening with a report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for our May 6th Board of Education meeting. Tonight is the annual budget hearing for the 25-26 school district budget, and we also have a presentation on critical thinking. So I will keep my report brief, as I know we have a lot of ground to cover. Our last board meeting was just one week ago, but we're coming into the busy season in school life, so we have a number of events in the meantime. Last Monday was the Rye High School Vocal and Percussion Concert, and the Orchestra Band Concert was last Wednesday. So we've officially kicked off spring concert season. The last day of classes for the seniors was last Friday, and the students enjoyed a senior walkout parade through the school halls and an ice cream truck courtesy of the PO. The Midland Fair was this past Saturday. My apologies for my poor weather forecasting this Saturday. I did my best. And we are looking ahead to the Milton Fair on May 17th. Our high school students are wading into AP exams this week and next, and there are elementary field trips and end-of-school socials galore to look forward to. The 25-26 school district budget roadshow continues. Since our last meeting, we've spoken at the RMSPO meeting, to the seniors at Rye Rec, the Milton School PTO meeting, and today at the Midland School PTO meeting. This Thursday, we'll be at the Osborne Retirement Community, always one of my favorite stops on the tour, and next Thursday, we'll be at the High School PO meeting. I'm looking forward to seeing many community members and hopefully answering all their questions about the budget and the school district. The Focus on Excellence Budget Newsletter is at the printer and will soon be hitting mailboxes across Rye. Lots of details. Every year, we put this newsletter with information about the budget vote and Board of Education trustee election, and mail it to every postal address in the 105-80. It will also be posted on the district website this Friday. May 1st was National School Principals Appreciation Day. Today is National Teacher Appreciation Day, and tomorrow is National School Nurses Day. I know the parent organizations do a great job of celebrating and recognizing our principals, teachers, and school nurses, and that many parents have reached out directly to say thank you. So I hope they're feeling appreciated. I want to add my thanks and the board's thanks to that chorus of voices. Our next Board of Education meeting is Tuesday, May 20th. Not coincidentally, the day of the annual budget vote and Board of Education election. We will also be celebrating student musicians who participated in NISM competitions and festivals that evening as well. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Byrne. Now we will move on, pardon me, to the hearing of the public on the 2025-2026 proposed budget. Dr. Byrne?
Okay, so we have, as we've been out in the community, talking about the budget and sharing the details with the community. We have been, I'm sorry, my computer is not going on to the...
Board access has been funky with the attachments.
So as we've been out talking with the budget, it is important to share that this proposed budget that the community will vote on on May 20th maintains all current programs and services. It is a fully tax cap compliant budget. It has a budget-to-budget increase of 2.45%. The current budget is $110.5 million, and the proposed budget, 2.45% increase, is $113.2 million. There's a few notable programming shifts that I'd like to just review. We've presented all of this information throughout the spring. We have two additional high school teachers in support of the launch of the new International Baccalaureate Program. We have a new school district-wide Director of School Counseling and Student Wellness. We have one reduction of a physical education teacher at secondary level. We have two wonderful physical education teachers who are retiring this year, and it is not necessary to fill both of those positions, so we'll only be filling one. And we have one additional school custodian who will support the added 12,000 square feet for the new additions at Midland and Osborne, and that position will be shared across the two schools. We have a few notable facilities and security updates as well within the budget. Over at Osborne School, there is a roof replacement for the cafeteria. The roof has ended, it's reached its lifespan, has some leaks, and is in need of a full replacement. We will begin the process of upgrading our security cameras throughout the district. We first started installing security cameras seven years ago, and as you know, the way technology changes, it is necessary to begin replacement of those original cameras. We will continue the process of enhancing the portable radio connectivity and functionality throughout the district. We have been working closely with the Rye Police on improving the portable radio communications, and that enables us to have communication across all buildings and the district office and with the police department through our handheld radios. Without having to pick up phones, we have connectivity across the community. And we will be adding the Salto Locking System and the PA Lockdown System into the installation of the new wings at both Midland and Osborne. I won't be going through all of these charts, but we have throughout the process this spring. But for our expenditure summary, this is where you see the 2.45% budget-to-budget increase. You have the proposed budget of $113.2 million, the approved budget, the current budget, of $110 million, and that is a difference of $2.7 million. Our revenue summary, so as we always look at the different components of the budget, the great majority of our budget support comes from local property taxes. The residential and commercial tax base, which makes up in this coming budget, the property taxes of the $113 million will be $102.3 million. Our state funding is approximately $3.3 million. It's actually a little bit of an increase over last year. It's the first time we've had an increase in a while. We also have the use of $2.7 million in fund balance. We have our utility taxes and county sales tax, which also offset some of the budget and add to those revenue sources. So with the two components of the budget, you have the state sources, the taxing sources are one side of it, and you have the tax levy, which is the local property owners and the commercial property owners who contribute to what's known as the tax levy. That increase is 3.66%. Again, this is a tax cap compliant budget, and within that, it is an estimated taxable assessment, and this is based on information we receive from the independent tax assessor in the city of Rye of $133,403,000. That leads us to an estimated tax rate per thousand of assessment of 767.0291. And that information will be updated as we get to July 1st, when the tax warrant is issued, and we will get that information from the tax assessor. So the next step in the budget process beyond the hearing tonight is on May 20th, which is the budget vote and trustee election, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. here at Rye Middle School in the gymnasium. There'll be plenty of parking in front of the school, and we hope to see everyone out to vote on that day. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Dr. Byrne. So at this time, it is the hearing of the public. So for those people in the audience who have come to share any thoughts that they have on the proposed budget, we invite you to the podium at this time. Please state your name, your address, and if you are here with an organization, and please limit your remarks to three minutes, and we will have the district clerk set the timer. If anyone would like to come forward to make comments about the 25-26 school year budget, please feel free.
Hi, I'm Sharon Mantell. I live at 42 Colby Ave. I have a 7th grader at RMS and a 4th grader at Osborne. I am finishing my second year as PTO president at Osborne, and before I pass the baton, I'm honored to stand here before you tonight. We know there are many moving parts, estimates, and iterations that go into the budget preparation, and we say thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of Osborne, Midland, and Milton PTOs when I say we stand behind this proposed budget for many reasons, and I'll highlight just a couple of them. We are grateful that it's tax cap compliant. Last year's override was much needed, and we know it was important to raise the additional funds. This year, it's nice to have it be a more predictable increase for families. Security is top of mind for parents, and adding the Salto locks and PA system to the new wings at Osborne and Midland, making it as secure as the rest of the building is important to us. Plus, you can fix the leaking cafeteria roof at Osborne. We are also excited that this budget includes hiring a director of counseling. I've been really impressed with the workshops that Emma McCabe has led in my son's classroom at Osborne, and I brought a few of them to kind of show off some of this sort of DBT conflict resolution coping skills work he's done and brought home. He really enjoys the classroom sessions, and we all appreciate the continued focus on this area. We wholeheartedly support this budget. Thank you, Dr. Byrne, for all you've done for our schools. You'll be missed. Welcome, Dr. Murray. We're excited for your continued and growing leadership. And thanks to everyone at the district, behind the scenes, business office, technology, curriculum, coaching, facilities, for keeping our schools running safely and productively every day. And thank you to the board for your countless hours of volunteerism and your commitment to our children and to Rye. I'm sure we never say thank you enough.
Well, thank you, Sharon, for all that you do at the PTO. It's greatly appreciated. It is all one big working system together. Is there anyone else? Please feel forward.
My name is Rhonda Gilroy, and I'm speaking here tonight as the current co-president for the Rye Fund for Education, and also as a parent of two Rye High School students and an incoming Rye Middle School student. I live at 12 Dogwood Lane. I'm here to voice my support for this year's school budget. This budget is more than a financial statement. It underscores the district's dedication to the Rye commitment, to the students, faculty, staff, administration, and the community. As you know, the mission of the Rye Fund for Education is to enrich the educational experience of our students through grants that support innovation and instructional needs. We exist to supplement where the school budget cannot. But we can only exist if there is a solid foundation of public support for our schools. When the district's budget is strong, responsible, and constructive, that allows our grants to be truly effective. This budget will ensure that synergism. It is tax cap compliant, maintains all programs, and allows for small class size to complement the world-class public education we are fortunate to have in this town. It also funds implementation of two important instructional programs that RFE has contributed to. The Responsive Classroom Program and the renowned International Baccalaureate Program. It also provides funding for safety and facility repairs. Overall, this budget will provide the funding necessary to attract and retain talented educators, provide materials and instruction for modern, high-quality learning, and safe facilities. Important aspects of education that I believe will help all students find their passion and purpose. I extend my huge and sincere thanks to the Board of Education and administration for their hard work in continuing to balance fiscal responsibility and our children's best interests. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Any other members of the community here tonight to speak? Yes, please come forward.
Hi. It's going to be short and sweet.
That's okay. We love comments.
My name is Sarah Dugelkensky. I live at 14 Harding Drive. I'm a parent of a 4th grader and a 1st grader at Osborne, and I'm currently one of the co-presidents of RISE, RISE All-Inclusive Special Education Parent Group. I'm here tonight in support of the proposed budget for the 2025-26 academic year. This year's budget is tax cap compliant and fiscally responsible. It focuses on maintaining and strengthening all programs, supporting small class sizes, and allowing for the continued support and growth of our students, faculty, and staff. The Rye City School District is committed to providing an academic environment that is equitable and inclusive for all students. I'd like to thank all of you for your continued diligence, time, and dedication to our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Any other members from the community on the budget? Okay, seeing none, we will close the hearing of the public with just a reiteration of Dr. Byrne's statement. Before, May 20th, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. in the middle school all-purpose room, lots of parking and a great time to see your community members out and about someplace different other than the grocery store, or Target, or Starbucks, or any of the other places you may run into your friends. All right, moving on, we will now move on to the hearing of the public for a discussion of modifications to the volunteer firefighter's tax exemptions. Ms. Peruccio.
Thank you. I am here tonight to talk about an opportunity for us to modify the existing volunteer firefighter and ambulance worker tax exemption that we currently have in place. Recently, the Westchester County has modified their version of the same tax exemption that's offered at the county level. It's also sitting before the city for modification at the city level, and now I'm asking the board to follow suit and make those same exemptions. What it allows for is fire, volunteer firefighters, or ambulance workers living in Rye but serving other neighboring communities to have opportunity for the same exemptions of their counterparts who actually serve in the community of Rye. This would expand that exemption and allow for more opportunity for our community to serve not only Rye, but the larger county.
As, just to reiterate, as it stands now, we have an exemption, but you must live in Rye and serve, which by definition, for the ambulance crew, in particular, Rye does not have their own ambulance.
Correct.
It is a tri-area crew.
Correct.
So that is a limiting factor, unfortunately, for those individuals.
Correct.
And just one clarifying question.
Sure.
The, you said it was, it's already been adopted by the, at the county level?
Correct.
And the city level? Or is the, has the city?
They're, they're in the process.
Okay.
And so, Ms. Peruccio, for the purposes of business, tonight we are having our first hearing of the public, and then we will...
So presuming we will, that this is successful and we can take the next step, I would come to you on the May 20th, busy night, with a resolution for the board to modify the existing exemption to include what we just spoke about.
Okay, great. Does the board have any questions about this issue? Okay, this is a hearing of the public, so if there are members here in the public that are here this evening to discuss the volunteer firefighter ambulance crew memorandum, tax exemption, please feel free to come forward. Again, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. Seeing nobody coming forward, we will close the hearing and then move forward with coming back with a resolution on May 20th. Great, thank you, Ms. Peruccio. All right, moving forward. So now we are here for the presentation and discussion, Critical Thinking. Dr. Murray?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we were very happy to host our Critical Thinking exposition, which showcased and highlights the work that we are doing around critical thinking in our district. We have done this expo the last few years, and so we're delighted to bring you new projects and new learning tonight. The projects that we, that were featured in our expo are either one of the authentic projects that were designed as part of our district-wide work this year, or it's a project that the teacher designed, you know, as part of their course. And so tonight, we're going to be presenting, actually, I've got some teachers and students joining me tonight, to present two projects that, that were presented in the expo, and they were developed by our teachers, and we look forward to that. We have Katie Ridley here and Danielle Holbert. She, they're both 3rd grade teachers from Milton. So welcome our Milton students, they're joining them. And then we also have Anthony Fabrizio. He's our English teacher from Rye High School, and he has some students joining him as well, so we'll hear about their projects. Our overarching goal with critical thinking is to increase the level of critical thinking across content areas in order to further the work of the Rye commitment. The Rye commitment explicitly names critical thinking as a skill that we believe is important in the development of our students. And I think what you probably saw in the projects tonight, and you will hear from Anthony, Katie, and Danielle, is it's not just the critical thinking piece that you'll see in these projects, but there is collaboration, and there's creative problem solving, and there is effective communication involved in these projects as well. So it really, it really kind of speaks to everything we're trying to do, so I hope that that comes through their talks tonight. And this is a definition of critical thinking that you've also seen. For those of you who've been, you know, on the board the last couple of years, this is our definition of what it means, what it looks like in the classroom when we see teachers fostering the skills and when we see students demonstrating the skills. We see that critical thinking as the act of deliberately analyzing information to make a judgment or a decision, so there's an outcome in some way. It uses logic and reasoning and creativity to draw the conclusions and to come to some kind of understanding. And then there, it also includes separate skills kind of under the umbrella of critical thinking, like questioning, evaluating, interpreting, and synthesizing. And over the last three, actually four years, we, and the way we've been growing our critical thinking work is that we started just by studying what critical thinking is. This is across the district. So what is it? And then what are the various instructional components that are involved? And then that year, the teachers chose sort of like a study group based on those subtopics like feedback and questioning and reflection. And I chose those study groups, and they sustained that, that topic all year and folded those skills into their instruction. From there, we moved more towards, from instructional strategies, more to curriculum. So it was about developing critical thinking tasks, which would be kind of the day-to-day activities that would be taking place in the classroom. And then this year, we moved to designing authentic projects. And this, these are longer, longer projects. They're sustained over a longer period of time. It allows students to go deeper with the skills, and also allows us to fold in all these other skills mentioned in the Rye commitment besides just critical thinking. And so every teacher this year, K to 12, designed, designed or redesigned an authentic project. Some teachers took something that, you know, they've designed before, and they used six elements, which I'll, I'll explain what those are, to deepen the level of the work. So the six elements that we use when, when designing these projects, one is that the students create or solve a problem or perform for real purposes and audiences. So there's a real reason behind the work, and that's a really important part of these projects. Students have choice. There's an element of choice, because we know choice increases engagement. There's an element of investigation or research, and you see that, no matter it's the, the first, you know, the first grade projects all the way up through the, well, kindergarten wasn't here tonight, but kindergarten too, there's an element of research and, and research for a real purpose, and a way to grow their skills and support their thinking. In every project, students are collaborating, and they also have multimodal experiences. They're not just getting their information in one way, and they're not just presenting their information in one way. And there are also multiple opportunities for reflection, feedback, peer feedback, and revision throughout the process. So those are the design elements that we use with the teachers that started this fall. And just to talk a little bit about what that process looked like for them, it was really facilitated by administrators, building-level administrators. They did an outstanding job collaborating together to think about what these sessions could look like for our teachers. And they were facilitated during faculty meetings and during our November Superintendent's Conference Day. Teachers left that November Conference Day with a majority of their work done, with an outline, a framework incorporating those elements into their design. They were refined during faculty meetings, again, led by principals and assistant principals and instructional coaches. They were given feedback along the way. And then this month, actually, the middle school and high school just on, on Monday, facilitated a reflection feedback protocol during their faculty meetings. So the teachers were asked to bring student work, and they, and they reflected on it, thought about some possible revisions for next year. Just to give you a specific example of that, the, the middle school, their, their big takeaway from doing that work was that they, the teacher saw that their, the area around authentic audiences, it was something that they struggled with, because it's hard sometimes to find what's the, who's the audience that will really, has a vested interest in what they investigated. And they also realized that they want to spend more time in the peer feedback piece, and they thought that could really help move the projects along. So the elementary schools will be doing this later this month, on the 19th. They'll be going through the same protocol. Okay, so let's get to our first project. So Katie Ridley, Danielle Holbert, if you guys want to come on up with your students, and, you know, let me give you the controls.
Hi, I'm Danielle Holbert.
And our project was called Becoming a Global Citizen. And in this project, students took on the role of being a global citizen who understands the world and takes action. So to begin, we needed to understand what is a global citizen. So, girls, can you tell us, what's a global citizen? Go over to the microphone.
A global citizen is somebody who doesn't just help their country, it's somebody who helps other countries too. A global citizen is also somebody who takes action when something is wrong.
Thank you. So we thought about what can we do to help make the world more peaceful, sustainable, and fair, and helping value differences, working together, and taking action. So in our project, our first step was to decide which country to focus on, and that was their first choice that they were given, where they, did they want to focus on Kenya, Brazil, or China.
The next piece of our project was, now that we have our country, let's get into researching it and finding everything that we can about it. So we began to synthesize our learning across various texts and platforms, including online databases, reaching out to people who have a connection with the country that we were studying, and really getting an understanding of the culture, the history, and the current challenges of those countries. It also really encouraged the students to think about different perspectives and different ways of life, as well as being able to really create more well-informed opinions and thinking about the solutions to some of these problems. We also then collaborated between the groups, all the students who chose the same country worked together in the classrooms, and then we worked together with the other classes in the building at Milton who also chose that country. So everyone who studied China got together to talk about what they learned, what problems they thought were really important and possible solutions on how we could help here as Rye residents. Karen, can you share the global connection of the domino effect that you thought about?
So when they cut down the Amazon rainforest, it's kind of like when you set up a set of dominos and then you knock it down. When the Amazon rainforest gets cut down, that's the first domino knocked over, and then it goes from the next domino to the next until the earth is polluted. And with polluted air comes polluted water, and polluted water comes to evaporate, and then it goes into the clouds and then polluted rain. And then eventually, this spreads all over the earth through the Atlantic Ocean, and the animals... the animals, they're not gonna have a nice time. And so when they just cut down the rainforest and they don't care, they ruin everyone's life. And that is a thing that everyone doesn't enjoy. Besides them, they're like, we don't care. So when, as I said, the domino is getting knocked over, it goes through the whole earth. And it just affects everybody's life. And eventually air becomes a priceless thing getting sold, sold in air tanks. People are gonna try and break into shops, get any of the air tanks. Or the more calmer way, people just get gas masks, which is the more nice way to sell things.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
So we had really great conversations in our classrooms, um, where students started making these kind of global connections. And as Karen did, connecting different parts of our world and seeing how they all affect one another. Then, um, after doing our research and brainstorming, uh, students were given their next choice. And this time the choice was how they'd like to present their learning. So they had the option of a podcast, a poster or a video. They had to collaborate a lot. They had to agree on how they'd like to present, thinking about their audience. So what, what's the purpose? Why are they trying to, why are they trying to present something? Who do they want to present to? So again, they had those three choices and they had to collaborate. Girls, how did it go when we collaborated?
It was very hard working in groups. I learned more about how to work in groups, but we had a lot of disagreements. Um, some of the strategies we used was rock, paper, scissors, and we always tried to make the work even, but I learned a lot.
Thank you. Um, so we did a lot of reflecting, both on, um, our learning, but also on how to collaborate and work in groups. And they had some very honest reflections and we definitely had some conflicts that we had to work through, right? The Kenya group even came up with a compromise because they wanted to do the video and they wanted to do the poster. So they had to work it out and agreed that they actually did both projects, right? So did an excellent job. Um, our class all chose to do a video. So we had three videos in our class. So the students had to work together on creating a script based on what they learned about the country, the problem that they wanted to focus on and a solution. And then once they created that script, uh, they had to learn how to use WeVideo to record on a green screen and then edit their own videos. So the one that we will share shortly, the students edited by themselves.
And then once we really had this collective understanding of the country, we had our problems and possible solutions. We noticed that the project actually started to take roots and become even more authentic for the students. They started to carry the ideas into other parts of their school day outside of just the subject of social studies. And for example, Karen, can you teach us a little bit about what you thought about when we were studying penguins for reading?
So when some other teachers came over, I got assigned a sheet about penguins and to learn about penguins. And so when I saw a bonus fact about penguins, I saw that they can filter out seawater and drink it without getting sick at all. And so I was thinking, well, if penguins can filter out seawater, why don't we just take the DNA from a penguin? So I was thinking, some scientists just go over to the Arctic and just pluck feathers out of penguin. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And so they just, they just turned the, they just handed over to the other scientists and they study it to try and find out how the penguins filter out the seawater. And then they just take that bit and turn it into a shot and see if someone turns into a penguin or not. And if they do, it's a fail. If they don't, that might just solve the world's water crisis. And that is my idea about penguins on how penguins can save the world. So if someone in your family hunts penguins, tell them to stop because they might change the world.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Karen. So it was really neat to see that it started extending beyond just the authentic project. Um, and they were making those connections like Karen did during a reading lesson, um, during our animal research. And then we also had some students take it even further outside of the classroom and into the community. And so ladies, if you could share what you've been doing on the weekends and after school.
We've been selling bracelets and we had lemonade stands. Me and my friend Elle, who isn't here tonight, made thirty dollars. And me and my friend Isabel made more than a hundred dollars.
Me and my friend Vivian have a business called Bracelet Besties and we sell bracelets. And that money will be donated to an organization that will help Kenya get water.
This is what we use when we sell bracelets.
We have my keychains, headbands.
Bracelets.
And this is where we keep the money.
Thank you. So, um, it's been really rewarding for us and our fellow, fellow teachers to see the students take something that we learned in the classroom and extend it to all parts of the school day and then beyond into their daily lives. When they came back to us and said that they were making a bracelet stand, when Karen made this connection in reading, that's really made this rewarding for us and, and shown us that, um, through this authentic project, our students really are taking on the, the role of being a global citizen who thinks about different perspectives and thinks about the world beyond Rye, New York and our connection and how we fit in it and how we can help one another and take action.
We're really proud of them. They did such hard work. And did you guys like the project?
Yes, a lot.
It was really fun.
Yes, very cool.
Oh, yep. So we do have a video. So, um, this, right here? So this is our video from the Brazil group.
Welcome to Brazil. We are Karen, which is me.
I'm Brock.
And I'm Declan.
I'm Nellie.
I'm Liv.
Visiting this country feels like a once in a lifetime experience because of all the beautiful things you can see and do here.
But unfortunately they are facing a serious problem which could affect visits here as well as your experience in your own country. Brazil is located in South America. The capital of Brazil is Brasilia.
The type of government is a federal republic. The president's first name is Luis.
The currency is called VIO.
Here in Brazil, they love many different sports. Like soccer, the best player on their soccer team, Pelé, unfortunately died in twenty twenty?
Brazil has won five World Cups. That's the most in the world. Pelé helped them win three.
In Brazil, they call soccer football.
Goal!
Brazil has also home to one of the biggest rainforests in the world, the Amazon rainforest. It covers almost half the country. It is also a major tourist attraction.
There are many different types of animals in Brazil. Capybaras and sloths are two of the cutest animals that live there.
There are also frogs, chimpanzees and monkeys.
The rainforest is important to entire global community because it provides seventy percent of the clean oxygen of our earth.
All of these animals are losing their homes. Because of deforestation.
Deforestation is when they cut down trees like what they're doing to the Amazon rainforest. It's a really big problem because a lot of animals are losing their homes and becoming extinct, especially beautiful capybaras and sloths.
This affects all of us.
That's because the air will get polluted. The trees help us breathe and drink water.
And with no clean air or water or food, we all get sick.
When the trees get cut down, the animals lose their homes. And when the animals lose their homes, they can go endangered or even extinct. When the animals go extinct, it can cause an effect on the, on the rainforest. And it has an effect on the animals that eat it because they lose their food source.
Thank you for watching our Brazil video.
We hope you learned a lot about it!
Thank you so much, Ms. Holbert and Ms. Ridley and the Milton students for joining us tonight. We really appreciate it. Wonderful work. Do you feel good? Yes? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. Okay. And up next we have Mr. Fabrizio and our, um, who's a high school English teacher, joining us with some of his students. So the project that you just saw, the third grade project is one of our authentic projects. That's how, that's how it was designed. Anthony is, um, he has a, something he wants to show you in terms of the critical thinking that he's just built into his coursework. And, and it's particularly relevant because we've been having a lot of conversations around AI and the use of AI to enhance instruction. And this is a, you know, a good example of how we can use AI to enhance critical thinking. So.
Hi folks. So the English department at the high school and the middle school have been working for the last, I think, two years with Mary, Mary Ernworth from Columbia University. Uh, and the last time that Mary had come in on the last superintendent's conference day, she had us working, um, with ChatGPT. So your large language, language model AIs are your chatbots, your, um, your Geminis, your ChatGPTs, those sorts of things. And, um, we've had, as the English teachers, great anxiety about, um, sort of AI. And I personally have gone through quite a sort of range of emotions over the last couple of years. Being interested in it on a personal sense, being very, very suspicious of it in the classroom. And so, um, we were working with Mary on a Friday and I think it was the following, it was Tuesday. I said, you know what? I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it. My kids are working on a paper, uh, and so let's see what's gonna happen. And so, by the way, I have, uh, three of them with me here. Nico Allard, Cameron Harwood and Arav Shah, um, and they'll jump in at some point. But really big picture, um, we are afraid of what the LLMs are gonna kind of do and compromise in terms of critical thinking, right? As Dr. Murray had said, we've been doing so much work over the last couple of years, um, to foster, uh, critical thinking in our class and in our curriculum. And as English teachers, we're worried about something that can produce language. And is that going to jump over, uh, our students' ability to do the thinking themselves? And so the project that, you know, we threw together really quickly was, how do we design, um, some prompting to use a chatbot to make sure that the students' critical thinking is central and that the AI is not giving them ideas. It's not giving them language. And so we really had that reservation on our way in. And then I think it's also worth thinking about, uh, just some really compromised thinking around, you know, labor, you know, when, when an LLM produces something, whose work is it producing? How are they not being compensated? So we're thinking about that. We're thinking about the environmental impact of, uh, the amount of energy it requires to, to kind of have these, these, these technologies. And so with all of that in mind, um, for me, it was just a matter of, you know, we're talking about it. We know it's a part of their lives. We know it's going to be a part of all of our lives. Uh, and it was a question of, you know, what does it look like in practice? And so this was really just like a first draft. And so the students were working on a creative essay, um, where the, the gist of it was, AP Lang is, is the highest level, uh, writing course we offer. And, uh, we were talking about, um, using an essay, using an essay topic as an opportunity to talk about, um, a bigger, broader, more universal idea. And so I had the students kind of come in, uh, prepared to get working. They had thought about their ideas. They did not know that they were going to sit down and, and start working with, uh, ChatGPT. They were prepared to have one-on-one conversations with me. Uh, we pulled the rug out from under them and said, instead of having that conversation with me, uh, you're gonna have that conversation with. It was supposed to be Magic School AI. We had some issues that morning. And so we, we kind of, we backdoored our way into ChatGPT, uh, to kind of make it happen. But, um, the trick here was they had their plans, they had their ideas. And we wanted them to work very specifically and very pointedly on, um, discussions of style and structure. It wasn't telling them what to write. They had done that work already. It was a question of, I've got this idea. Now how do I execute it? And the hope was if we approached the tool, um, to really centralize, um, the students, their thinking, their ideas, hopefully we can kind of maintain their control over that process. Arav was just joking with me. He's like, ah, do you have like, like flashy pictures? And I said, no, no, no. I have pictures of your, uh, of your, uh, of your chats with ChatGPT. But, and I understand, we can't read anything that's up there. We do have copies. People were taking copies of, of the chats and the papers, uh, that the students worked on. But the thing that I wanted you to be able to see there, uh, particularly on the left-hand side, it wasn't like they'd said, hey, here's my idea. How do I write it? Um, that's Arav's initial prompt on the left-hand side. It's, it's a pretty substantial paragraph wherein he's explaining the assignment, what he intends to do and what sort of assistance he's looking for, what sort of feedback he's looking for. And the biggest thing for us is making sure that the kids were in full control of, you know, the quality of what they were inputting into it. The amount of space that they were taking up in the chats. Again, you can see in all of those cases, it's, it's like you're looking at a text on your iPhone. The stuff on the right-hand side justified, that's, that's the student. Stuff justified on left-hand side, that's ChatGPT coming back at, at them. In, in most cases, if not all cases, um, the students are doing more writing than the, um, the AI is doing in all of these cases. And as they move through those conversations, and it's sort of creepy to say it that way, it becomes this conversation that the students are having with the, with the AI. They're maintaining control. They're maintaining, um, you know, the focus on their ideas. And again, I would really encourage you, if you didn't stop by, didn't grab, I'll, I'll kind of pull the, pull the chats back out if everybody wants to sort of flip through them on, at their leisure. In all of these cases, you can kind of look at what the AI is giving back to the students. It's reframing what the students have given them. And so that was really the, the gist of our work was, was trying to create something where, or, or kind of draw the lines for the sandbox where, um, the students are gonna maintain control. And so we have AI on the, we're, we're playing with AI in the classroom. This really kind of creepy scary thing that's giving a lot of us as educators a lot of anxiety. But I feel really good that, um, some kids did some really good thinking and they produced some really cool essays, um, by that. And so just a couple of reflections on my end, and then I'll kind of turn it over to them if they want to kind of jump up and, and, and have some, share some thoughts here too. But for me, it was really important. There's been a lot of theoretical talk. I don't know that a lot of us were jumping at the opportunity to play with these tools in class with students. Uh, and so I think it was a really important first step to just kind of do it. Like I said, I had an idea on a Friday afternoon. We were doing it in class on Tuesday morning. I think really important piece here, this doesn't seem to be a plug and play tool. There was a lot of work that we needed to do and, and hopefully, um, someone kind of echoed this. Uh, I don't think this is for every situation. It's not for every assignment, for every class, for every student. We need to be really thoughtful and really intentional about why we're using this tool, um, or any of these tools and how they can support the students as, as thinkers. And the other key piece that, that kind of came out of it is they were doing work on papers. I was not present, right? It was just them and their, their computers, but they were asking really good writing questions. And I think one of my greatest fears was if you take me out of the equation or you take us out of the equation, are students gonna be able to kind of get to those really good questions? And in all cases, I was kind of consistently blown away that students were asking really good questions. And I actually had a, a, a writing meeting with a kid, uh, yesterday, or maybe it was Friday during lunch. Uh, and we were looking at a draft of a, of a paper that she was writing and she said, can I show you something? And so she popped open another tab and there was another chat and she said, I, I took what we did two months ago and I tried it out and we were working and she was working on the conclusion of an essay. And that was an example of, you know, what we had tried on that random Tuesday in March, um, kind of out in the wild. She had sort of taken what happened there and kind of reapplied it. And so, um, yeah, and like I said, I think. And so, yeah, and like I said, I think I speak for a lot of a lot of us, you know, particularly, you know, in the English department. But, you know, I've talked to other teachers around the building. It's it's something that we know is in front of us. It's something that we're not very sure about. But, you know, I can I can say I really appreciate the opportunity to have gotten to try it, to be able to kind of share it with you. I think we're we're a ways away from kind of knowing exactly sort of what this looks like and how this looks. But but, you know, I'm happy to have kind of taken those steps. I want to do any of you guys want to share anything, any thoughts? Yeah, all right. Put them on the spot. Nobody's wearing any sparkly jackets.
Nice to see you all. Hope you're having a good evening. I think, in my opinion, the first, like, main outcome, like takeaway I had while working on this like essay was that you can use AI as a really good, like, baseline for writing, like, any sort of, like, piece or really for anything creative. Because if you take out the fact that, yeah, okay, you're talking to something that isn't actually a human, you can use it in a way that's really efficient to get to an idea. Like, if you want to, like, reach a point where, okay, I understand what I'm doing with a project. I'm understand what I'm doing with a piece of writing. You can use the AI kind of as like a compatriot to talk to and see like, okay, here's an idea. I'm gonna pitch this to you. What do you think about this? And it does take a lot of effort, as you saw from the previous, like, chats. It does take a lot of effort to get to the point where the AI can have these conversations. It's definitely different from talking to a real person where you can get to that point, like, near instantly, obviously. But it reaches, it is really helpful when in a scenario where you don't have access to, like, a teacher or assistant, where you can just ask them a question. It's just really useful. And there's obviously the fear that it can take over, like, jobs, it can take over, like, a general people. But it there's always, like, the amount that you can use it, the amount that you're using it to get to, like, the subject you want to complete. That's why I talked about it.
Good afternoon. Elaborating on Arav was saying is that the use of AI in the world seems almost inevitable, right? It's becoming a part of kind of every part of society as it continues to grow and improve. And we don't really know what it's gonna look like in education and here in our school district. But having this experience of being able to practice with it in a way that's productive and in a way in which we're still in control and we're still the creatives and we're able to really get something really good out of it without sacrificing our own creativity, which is a lot of the fear with AI, that it's gonna kind of take away some of human originality in the products we're creating. I think it's really valuable to have that learning experience and be able to apply it, maybe not even in school if that's not the way that it goes, but in the rest of our lives.
Hi, I'm Cameron. I want to talk about the thing that I pulled the most out of this assignment, which was the really fine line between sort of the conversation and the answers and how in an English class, you can't be looking for the answers when using AI for writing because that would take all the creativity and all the critical thinking out of it. And so I think that the most important aspect of using AI in education is conditioning the AI to make it so that it it is helping you and it is pulling the answers out of you rather than you pulling the answers out of it. And I thought it was interesting on the the slide about the Rye Commitment, how the most important thing is analyzing information to grow your own ideas. And I think that that is really what I pulled out of this assignment, the importance of it is giving you ideas and it is asking you questions, but it's what you take away from that, not because all it wants to do is write the essay for you. That's what it's there for. That's what it wants to do for you. And so you really have to work towards getting it to not do that because that's not its nature. And I I really enjoyed this assignment and getting it to be helpful for me. And I didn't feel like I was plagiarizing. No words in my essay ever actually came from the AI. And I think that's the most important part because I'm sure that there were people who did not do that. But that's 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 what they that's they're allowed to do that. But I really think that it was such an important learning tool, and I really tried to focus on not just doing the assignment, but thinking, how can I use this in other ways? Because I would love to come up here and say, no more AI, it's bad for the environment, but that's not realistic, and it's coming. And I think that it's so important to learn how to use it in a positive light rather than just, oh, I know Chat GPT is there. All I know is that it can give me all the answers. So I think that learning how to use it in a beneficial way is super, super important for education rather than just know at 2:00 AM it can write my paper for me. Because although that's true, it's not helpful for you in the long run. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for having us. Yeah.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ferbezio and Nico, Cameron and Arav. Thank you so much for coming and sharing your perspectives. And it just I'm glad that we were able to see that project because it does add so much to our conversation around AI, specifically thinking about critical thinking. So our next work, our our work kind of looking forward with critical thinking. As you know, we are studying AI. We will be studying AI in more depth this coming school year. But in addition to that, we will be continuing designing and redesigning authentic projects in the in next school year. And we'll be looking at those six design elements again. And teachers will be reflecting on their own practice and how to incorporate more or doing them in a way that's more beneficial for students and results in deeper learning. We also, we've done learning walks in the past. It's our goal to do learning walks again specifically around critical thinking. We developed a critical thinking tool a few years ago. And we want to bring the tool back into the learning walks and really look at that model of professional learning as a way to grow this work as well. And and as I said, we'll be looking at AI and how it can enhance this work. So any questions or comments?
Well, first of all, all of that was dynamite. And so you are the only students left. And so I look at you personally, and I say, thank you so very much. Our youngest learners needed to head home. It's time for bed. So and, you know, please share with your students tomorrow how unbelievably impressed we were, not only with the content, but also their delivery of the information. And so it's very clear that these students have taken in the information, that the work that has been done and has been produced is not at a surface. It truly is something that will be a project, a task, an opportunity that will be in your in in your thinking and how you develop and think as you move forward. All of the presentations tonight in the in the multipurpose room were really great to see the engagement of the students and the engagement of the teachers is always very impressive and very exciting to see. I would say specifically to the presentation in the project at Milton, one of the things that I, you know, just got really excited about is when the students are talking about learning how to work in groups. And this came through with another group of students that I was talking with. And I said, so how was it? And they said, wow, you know, it's hard. I said, I know. It is not always easy to work with people. And they, it was a seventh grade group who said, and we weren't allowed to pick, you know, we're not allowed on our vertical surfaces to work with our friends. We have to work with other people. And I said, what happens when it's somebody you don't get along with? And they said, well, we have to figure out how to talk with them and how to work with them. And through this work, we're, the district is focusing on the one aspect of the Rye Commitment, which is the critical thinking, but it is about becoming effective communicators and collaborators. But it's also teaching those SEL skills. And it's taking these, what people think of as soft skills, and showing that they're not soft. And in many times, it is only because of those skills that you will find yourself able to be successful in an academic environment when you're working with people that you may not necessarily always get along with. You don't want to have lunch with them, but you need to do a project. And so it's a great way to incorporate and to blend all of these really wonderful things that we're trying to teach our students to do in one amazing shot. And I will say to the teachers, none of that is easy. We are well aware of how hard it is, and we are so grateful to you all for trying things, for taking something that you say, I don't want, this is gonna be hard, I'm scared, it's uncomfortable, and doing it with your students and also sharing that vulnerability with your students so that they know that really when your teacher says you have to do things that are, you have to take a risk. You have to challenge yourself. They do it for themselves also. And hopefully, that makes it easier for you now to go forth and do that as well. I can go on forever, and I won't because I will. So anyone else on the board have anything else to share?
I will try. I don't have much of a voice, but I will try and say what I need to quickly. I think that the entire expo was incredibly impressive. What I walked away was how passionate every student was about the project that they were doing and how excited they were to share with with parents, with other faculty, with other students, with younger children, with older children. And it really demonstrates, you know, the level of thinking that our students are capable of doing. And it's it's truly amazing that we're getting our students to that level. So I commend all of you. It was great.
So I will keep it short because I know we're getting later into the evening. But everything that both Val and Jane just said, I completely agree with. And I think one of the things that I love about when we have these presentations and students come and talk about what they're learning is you can see how it has impacted them. And it's not just, yes, I learned this because I had to. It's I'm learning this, and it's something I'm gonna use as I continue on in life. I mean, clear, it was clear to me with some of the students from Midland, or sorry, Milton, that it really impacted them learning about the effects of the rainforest, not just they didn't just learn the facts about the country, like, it impacted them at a deeper level. And so seeing that and then hearing the high school students talk about how it really pushed them not just to have to learn how to figure out the prompts and move to that that deeper level, but it pushes you and you see where I want I want to retain ownership of my work. I don't want something else doing my work for me. And that is like a piece of integrity that you build as a student, and that's gonna carry forward in everything you do in your lives moving forward, too. So the these are all the things that are just every time we have one of these discussions. It just is is so phenomenal to hear. And, you know, that's why it's so wonderful that we've continued down this road and we keep moving it to the next level and the next level. And so I just I appreciate all of you talking about how the 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 highs and the lows of doing some of this work. And that's life, right? That's the what we're gonna have every day. We're gonna have hard stuff, and we're gonna have easier stuff, and we're gonna have fun stuff. And it's gonna make all of it a much better experience. So thank you, guys, very much, all of you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. This has just been a fantastic presentation and a great way to start off a wonderful week. So thank you all so very much. We appreciate it. We will now move on to the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. To ensure everyone has the opportunity to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process or research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member. Sorry. Yeah, yeah, here we go, or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding personnel, gosh, what's that? Sorry. Regarding personnel, these are protected, oh, goodness, or district personnel. These are protected under state and federal privacy laws. I have to use my finger when I read. I'm sorry. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask that you follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcstboard@ryeschools.org. Anyone from the public wanted to come forward? Seeing no one coming forward, we will move on to our consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? Sean Clopfer seconded by Valerie Lappam. Let's take a look at this evening's consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. Seeing no questions on the consent agenda, can I have a vote to approve this evening's consent agenda? All those in favor? That is five to nothing with two absences. On this evening's consent agenda, we have approved the budget and slate of officers for the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. This is a group of local school board representatives that we are part of. It's an association that provides training, professional learning, and support for school boards and trustees. Additionally, it provides advocacy work around issues of shared interest and concerns from school districts and school boards. We're fortunate to have an association that helps us better in our job as board members. We also have continued staffing for our summer school, which will be up and running in just a few short weeks, which is hard to believe. So that is everything on this evening's consent agenda. So we will move forward to information and discussion, Ms. Boyle, policy review.
Thank you. So tonight, we have two policies for our information and discussion review. These are both new policies that are a result of brand-new laws that were enacted earlier this year and will go into effect over the summer as we get closer to the beginning of the school year. The first is policy number 2245, which is our ex officio student member of the board. So the intent for this policy was to provide an opportunity for students to participate in more civic responsibilities and get direct experience with that as well as being able to have more of a voice at the board table. So we, the policy committee, sat and did a lot of consultation with our high school principal because much of the discussion around this was trying to figure out, how do we how do we figure out the selection process for representatives? What does that look like? How do we, how does this really fit into the current structures that are within the high school? And so part of that, as a result of that, we ended up with choosing from a some parameters around what we could do as a small-city school district when it came to identifying students for this role. The recently formed, I'm gonna get the name wrong, Student Government Association that was just started this year where students decided to run for student government and all of the students had an opportunity to vote on who those representatives would be. Those are the individuals that will serve in a rotating fashion on the school board for next year. There's a lot in this policy that identifies what students can't do. So they are not eligible to vote on any of the material that we vote on. They they are not eligible to be part of any of our executive sessions. But they will have an opportunity to learn about how a board functions, how we how we work as a municipal municipal government. And we will be working with Mr. Hera as well as Dr. Murray as we head into the next school year to identify how that student voice piece can be brought to the board. So this is the first draft for everyone to take a look at and see what the language says. And if there's, I don't know if there's any questions right now. We already had two members that are very familiar with this because they were part of policy. But if there are any questions as we move forward, we can certainly discuss those. Okay. This will be take effect starting July 1st. So the next policy is also, again, one that was written into law and will take effect actually as of September 1st. And this is policy 8113, which is the And this is policy 8113, which is the extreme heat condition days. Essentially, this was born out of health and safety concerns around buildings getting too warm during the summer months, or those buffer ends of the beginning and the end of the year when the temperatures seem to go much higher. So this outlines different things that would happen if a particular room reaches two different levels of degrees, what actions the school district should take, and how we would need to respond. There's a few choices about what we could do. In speaking with our director of facilities about this, Rob Gemigliano, there was very little concern that we would not be able to address any area of the school, and in fact, most of the areas of the school have already cooling aspects that are available to them, especially since we did so many upgrades for our, during the capital project.
It's like you knew it was coming.
I know. So.
Well, and to that end, there are many districts in the state that, so there was one state representative who was very excited and passionate about this policy, because there are so many school buildings that do not have the same facility structures that we have, and they do then have these kids in these classrooms at 82, 88, and hotter. And so it's great to hear that we're at a point that our director of facilities feels that this policy, while we will have the policy as required by statute, will not be a policy that we will have to actually engage with. So that's great to hear. And we thank our community for that, because the only reason we will not have to engage with this is because of the support of our community for that wonderful bond. And then subsequent budget votes where we will continue to support the development and progression of our facilities. Okay. Anything else for that?
Nope, that's, that's it.
Okay, great. All right. So we now have communications to and from the board. Was there anything else at the policy meeting?
No, this was primarily the discussion around these two policies. What will be coming, as we've talked about in the past, to our next meeting is a review of the code of conduct. So that will also be a substantial conversation with some of the updates that we are trying to include into that document, so that's on the horizon.
Next, next meeting, two meetings, six meetings? It has to be ready by?
Has to be ready by the end of the year, so I think the first reading will be May 20th, the next meeting.
Okay, great. All right. We have future meetings, we have the audit committee and health and safety, which will be next week. Are there any other communications to and from the board? Okay.
Traffic and pedestrian safety is meeting on Thursday, and the main item is a discussion around parking by, alleged parking by Rye High School students several blocks away on a particular street, and the residents are concerned about that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. We will make sure Mr. Shibenov gets details about that. Great. Okay, so we are going to actually adjourn into executive session from here, and we will not be coming back out to the public. But before we do, so I do just run and remind everybody, the board will have a special board meeting on Monday, May 19th. That will be in executive session. And so our next public board meeting will be on Tuesday, May 20th, which just so also happens to be the budget and trustee vote, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. But we will hold our board meeting at our usual time. So we look forward to seeing you all then. Can I have a motion, please, to go into executive session? Sean Clapford, seconded by Val Lapham. Thank you. All those in favor? That's five nothings, two absences. Thank you.